They all have copies of the resolution.
Hmm?
They all have copies.
Okay. What's the number?
Uh, it'll be fifteen.
So everything else has changed?
Yeah, well, it was on, we did it on the agenda.
Oh, I see, okay. All right, let's reconvene, please. All right, thank you for your patience, members of the public who are here and staff. All right, we'll move on now to item nine, resolutions. And for the first resolution, I will call on Commissioner Vice Chair Brevi.
Thank you, Chair. Stack, I move Resolution fifteen of today's date regarding settlement of pending litigation against the county and the sheriff's office.
Is there support?
Support.
It is supported by Commissioner Burrell. Discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, this is a roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, on the motion to adopt Resolution fifteen. Commissioners Green.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Burrell.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Brevi.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Boujack.
Yes.
Chair Stack.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have twenty-one yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution fifteen is adopted.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. Let's move to item number nine B, and I will call on Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move Resolution sixteen of today's date, KCCA weatherization, deferral reduction program grants of Kent County Community Action.
Great, is there support for that? Supported by Commissioner Ponstein. Is there discussion, questions, comments on that?
Should that be referral instead of deferral?
No.
Okay.
Sort of the difference between detention pons and retention pons. All right, any questions or comments? Yes, Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair. Stack. I know I've asked this question before, but, I mean, this is all good that we're getting homes that aren't eligible for weatherization services that make them eligible. My bigger question has always been the word "weatherization." What does that mean? I mean, we, first, you know, being from Michigan, we think of the cold and the hazards and everything, but the opposite is true on hot days, that houses can be just as dangerous. When we talk about these improvements, do we ever look at the summer heat risk for these homes?
Johnny James from Administration, good morning.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, that's a good question, and the focus is energy efficiency. So that would apply to summer weather as well as winter weather. Home can be made more efficient to retain air conditioning or keep heat out, as well as helping folks in the wintertime with efficiency improvements that keep the winter weather out.
Is that, you know, if the roof needs repair and mold and it would just be, just as easy to put in a full house ceiling fan to help with the exchange of the hot air out, so, thanks for the clarification.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, I see none. This is a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, on the motion to adopt Resolution sixteen. Commissioners Green.
Yes.
Antor. Merchant. DeBoer. Hildenbrand. Ponstein.
Yes.
Burrell.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Brevi.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Boujack.
Yes.
Chair Stack.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have twenty-one yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution sixteen is adopted.
Thank you. We'll move to item nine C, and I will call on Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. It is my pleasure to move Resolution zero-two-zero-nine-two-three-seventeen, the fiscal year 2022 state homeland security grant and budget amendment. It comes to us from the sheriff's office.
Thank you. Is there support? Supported by Commissioner McLeod. Comments or questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair. Stack. So just for a clarification, I mean, over the past three years, there's been money flowing out of the federal government and the state, and this is kind of a broad range on how we can spend this money. Can someone maybe clarify what the taxpayers can expect with the allocation of this money for their protection, because who wouldn't be against homeland security?
Morning, everyone. It is still morning. Yes, okay, good. All right. So I guess the best way to answer that question would be to talk about some of the grant guidance that we have to navigate in order to come up with successful projects. The state, as the pass-through, will basically grade us against that guidance to make sure that it aligns with what the indicators use the money for. Some examples of that, there's some national priority areas that we actually need to send, spend certain percentages of the grant dollars on. Each year it changes a little bit, but those things are like crowded places, soft targets, cybersecurity, types of thing. So as, as we go through and try to come up with projects, you know, perhaps a cybersecurity training, and that's... ...dollars coming up soon is part cybersecurity training and then exercise. That's just one example. Last year, I think when we spoke to the board, we outlined some of the work that we're doing with what's called the Rescue Task Force, which is basically fire departments in the event of like an active shooter event. Realized post-incident on some of the active shooter incidents throughout the country was, had people that were essentially bleeding out. Fire was staged out at the road, but nobody was coordinating a response to get the victims out from an area that maybe had been initially surveyed by law enforcement but not cleared. So we purchased ballistics protection for the fire departments so that they're able to send some folks under the attraction of police to... That would be another flavor of some of...
...patient. I know when the public reads our agendas that are posted and, and this, there's not a lot of detail, a lot of time, and that clarified a lot of things, that it's just not more money being passed out, it's actually for, for things that are...
The only other point, if I may, would be that, you know, those priority areas, the percentage at which that we are, essentially, the funding is earmarked to go towards, that is increasing. We're actually getting a little bit less money every year, about ten, eleven thousand less every year for this particular grant. Our discretion is getting less and less, and it's getting much more...
Thank you. Matt, he is our emergency manager director. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, if not, this is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, on the motion to adopt Resolution seventeen. Commissioners Green.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Burrell.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Brevi.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Boujack.
Yes.
Chair Stack.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have twenty-one yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution seventeen is adopted.
Thank you. We'll now move to our next item on the agenda, which is the second opportunity for public comment. If you wish to address the Board of Commissioners with respect to matters within our general jurisdiction, you may do so now. You don't even have to identify an agenda item. You still only have three minutes, and you still have to identify who you are and relive.
How you doing, everybody? My name is DeAndre Jones, stay in the city of Grand Rapids. Where do I start with this three minutes? It's crazy. I got a lot I want to say. First of all, excited to bring esports to Kent County. I got to work at the car show because I'm a committee member for the West Grand Neighborhood Organization, and I got to network with everybody, got to talk to all of the fancy cars, even the guys who make the exotic Ferraris and all of that stuff. Those guys follow my Instagram and my business page. I told them I'm gonna get those cars one day, so they're like, well, we'll see. But I will get there. I will get there. I definitely see myself in a Ferrari or a Lambo or something like that, driving around the city. I'm gonna really get there one day. But I actually ran into Showspan, who's actually the organization that puts that, the car show on, and they actually wanted to create an esports experience, but they didn't have the resources and the people to help them do it. So I'm excited for the 2024 car show because I would help them put, put together esports experience at the 2024 car show at the DeVos Place. Hey, I'm pretty excited. I gotta hit a dance move for that because it's crazy. And then I got a, working, just being able to bring esports, I finally made some progress with Grand Rapids Public Schools. That's moving forward. I got to connect with the superintendents yesterday. I went to Grand Valley State University. I wanted to go network. They were doing cover letters and resumes, and I didn't have a cover letter or a resume. I just wanted to go network. So I just went to go speak to them. I ran into the superintendent for Wyoming Public Schools, Hudsonville Public Schools, Rockford, and I ran into some staff from Grand Rapids Public Schools. And so I got to invite them to the event that we're hosting at the Four Star Theater on April 22nd. I ran into Jose Douglas, who's the chief, he's a sheriff for our police department, and they're looking to get involved with the esports competition. So I'm looking to get our local police department in, our Kent County sheriffs involved, to truly strengthen our community, to truly build some type of trust and some type of understanding, because I'm tired of people in the hood, I'm tired of people of our underserved communities not being able to understand the difference that, yeah, they may work, they may have a badge, they may do a job that you want to do, but they do the same things that you do on a daily basis. We just walk, have different walks of life, and I really want people to understand that. I want to build the economy up, I want to strengthen our communities, I want to do cool innovative things, and I want to be a leader. I want to show the world what I can do, I want to show the universe what I can do. I want to show my Kent County Commissioners, my state politicians, and my city Commissioners what I can do, and I'm a leader, and I'm excited for the work I'm going to be putting in. I'm excited for the work I'll continue to do. I'm just excited to really change our community. I believe I'll transform our community in an equitable, sustainable way, and I'll be able to get the police department to do cool things and do esports events. Also, if, when we get to the airport, I would like to, for the Kent County sheriffs, for you guys to host a competition where we can compete against other constituents. Thank you. Wow.
I just have to say, your persistence and passion's inspiring.
Can we get the livestream going?
I believe... It is up? It, is it not up? It is up.
Hi, my name is Doug Lee, and I'm a resident for thirty-four years in Cascade. I just passed out to you details of an event at Grand Valley State University this week with our very own health department listed as a partner. On the first page, you will notice the health department logo listed as the partner. This is important, as I will discuss later. I'd like to read just a couple of days from the syllabus of this event that this, we're using taxpayer dollars on. On Wednesday, which is yesterday, Wellbeing Wednesday, was kinky karaoke. Join us for a fun night of sex-related songs and condom cupcakes. Bring your friends and roommates, and let's see what we've got. On Thursday, which is today, it's Less Thrive Thursday. Sometimes we all need, for a good time, to add a little something to the mix. Join us for an event where we will learn about sex toys, strap-ons, and assisted devices as are fun, as they may need to be necessary for various populations. High school sex ed classes usually lack adequate sexual health education for those of the LBD, LGBTQ plus community. To address this, learn openly, openly about gender, sexuality, affirming language, barrier methods, and how to prepare for sexual health clinic visits and more. Although the GVSU can do what they want as they please, using taxpayer monies is not appropriate. Adam London has convinced many here that he's a family man. Adam London is a man who is driven by special interest groups and not representative taxpayers who pay him. So let's go back to the logo. Calls were made, visible partnerships of the websites were removed, so the optics of this event is hidden from seventeen of you, but not the involvement and use of taxpayer dollars. Most times, the cover-up is worse than the actual event. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Good morning.
Good morning. Hi, I'm Marcus Ringnalda, Gaines Township resident and founder and president of the Friends of Four Star. Here, first of all, to tell you about an event at the theater this weekend, twelve hours of family-friendly programming. We're going to have food and pastries from local restaurants. We are going to have a free screening of the Black Panther film, six hours of Latin music, magic and poetry throughout the day. So we are open, we are celebrating phase one. But also here, sadly for the second meeting in a row, to address public comments made against this by now a former commissioner, calling it, calling the project, which received a half million dollars of ARPA funding out of the 1.6 million applied for, a long shot and total violation of integrity and ethics by the Republican leadership. Again, mind-boggling to me, this project was in your top twenty-five, and the subject of five years of community-engaged planning. The first question through this whole ARPA process is what other planning efforts have supported your idea? 1.4 million dollars spent studying by third-party consultants. What kind of investments do we want to see on South Division? And again, the Four Star Theater comes up as a highly equitable development for the community that has been neglected for decades, and it's literally in our city's master plan. And the problem is, these statements being made publicly as collateral damage from this process are harmful to the private fundraising efforts that inevitably come between the bookends of public funding for projects like this. So my request is, you know, you've held, number one, I, the process, the process was good. Inevitably was going to have some deal-making, some partisan deal-making, but you did a phenomenal job of spreading money equitably throughout this community. I recognize that. You all, many of you know, I've been here for just about every step of the way, and tireless advocacy is the way we get our ideas out there. So I know you have held some money back from your ARPA funding. I have a project that's being actively harmed, and my hope is that you would consider restoring the funding to the Four Star Theater at the requested amount. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Daniel Scott, longtime resident of Kent County, of course, and more importantly, I'm a follower of the Lord Jesus Christ. That's my real identity. I want to thank Commissioner Burrell for that very powerful invocation to our meeting here. I'm here today just to commend and speak out for Black History Month. Black History Month. First of all, just want to remind everyone, again, at 3:20 East Fulton, just a couple miles from where we're sitting and standing today, on the average, every month, they're murdering one hundred and twenty of our fellow citizens. Nationwide, one thousand African-American children are murdered every day. Since 1973, murder of black children in the womb outnumber all other causes of death in that community. Last time I was here, I spoke about Martin Luther King Jr. We just had his birthday, remember it? Again, he said this, "How can the dream survive if we murder the children? Every aborted baby is like a slave in the womb of his or her mother. The mother decides his or her fate." And then I just wanted to mention several other prominent African-American leaders, both past and present, who were against murder in the womb. Sojourner Truth, Frederick Douglass, Fannie Lou Hamer, Harriet Tubman, or she was the Underground Railroad, Dr. Mildred Fay Jefferson, Louisiana State Senator Katrina Jackson, Benjamin Watson, and Alveda King, Martin Luther King's granddaughter, very outspoken. One last one. Dr. Lady, Dr. Mildred Jefferson. She made history as the black, first black woman to graduate from Harvard Medical School. She also made history as a founder of the pro-life movement and one of the first presidents of the National Right to Life Committee. She was, by President Reagan's own words, was the one that used, was used to change his perspective from a pro-death politician to a pro-life. By the way, if you, anyone listening to me needs assistance, we have two ministries that can help you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? I do not see anyone else, so we will go ahead and close public comment. Next item is our administrators' report. Al?
I just have a couple items today. In the digest that I sent out yesterday, there's two links to surveys. One is from Experienced Grand Rapids. Commissioner Hildenbrand and myself represent Kent County on the Experienced Grand Rapids Board of Directors, and they're looking to get community input that will help direct decisions made on improving services and amenities for those who visit our community. Also, KCAA has a survey, a community need survey, which is very important for how they, as you know, they have millions of dollars in grant funding that's targeted to meet community needs, and so getting, getting a great community response to that would also be very much appreciated. Also, I think, I wanted to let you know, please watch your inboxes. We have an updated PowerPoint coming out on the insurance authority. We plan to bring that to you, the first set of meetings in March for approval. We did update it based on the two additional sessions that we had with Commissioners, since we had new Commissioners join the board, and if I could get your input, if you could send it within about a week of getting that, I would greatly appreciate it, so we can make sure we keep everybody updated as we start to move through that process. Also, I just wanted to mention that Commissioner DeBoer did blurt this last night, that there, of this sex ed week at Grand Valley, and I just wanted to give some facts about the situation. Kent County has not financially participated in the past or present with this event. In the past, we did provide STI testers, as we do for many organizations throughout the community, and this year, in fact, we didn't provide STI testers because Grand Valley had their own. We did pass along the state vouchers that we get for this purpose to Grand Valley. And so I just wanted to make sure everybody had an update on the status of that and what the health department's involvement this year was, so, and that's all.
Or wasn't.
Correct. So that's all I have for today.
Okay. Now we're to reports. Anyone have any reports? Commissioner LeGrand?
Thank you, Chair. Apropos of our Whitewater presentation this morning, Commissioner Boujack and I were at the Grand Valley Metro Council meeting last week, and we did have a great presentation from the Elgro Group that he referenced in that presentation. And those Commissioners who do have, touch the river especially, I would just want you to know that on their staff, they do have an urban waters ambassador. So they do have someone who is primed to talk to people in the community about access to the river, health of the river, all kinds of issues like that, and, and there's lots of information there about the educational program. Very easy to find, Elgro, online. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Commissioner Sparks?
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to give a report about the area agency on aging, I think I said that right, of West Michigan. Our meeting was talking about the direct care workers and elder abuse, and of course, advocacy for the seniors. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports? You?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brevi?
I have a brief report from the Board of Public Works. We met last week, and we approved two grants that will be coming to us from Eagle, and they'll likely be before the Board of Commissioners, but one of them is for some robotics equipment at the recycling center that will help sort all the recycling that comes in, and it can be programmed over time, and it really saves us from needing additional staffing, which is very difficult to get there. So it'll be a great thing in improving the recycling center, and there was also a grant for some recycling equipment for the North Kent Transfer Station. So we'll see that coming to our board soon. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Anyone else reports? I just have one brief report. Commissioner LeGrand, Commissioner DeBoer, and I met with the Community Mental Health Network 180 Board. It is moving ahead on the progress for our new crisis stabilization system and unit, and we're excited about that becoming a reality finally, but it continues to be a challenge in that environment. Funding will continue to be difficult for us to meet the expectations, no, the demands of the state with respect to what services are to be required. And as we go into an environment where the competition for employees becomes increasingly difficult, our ability to make sure we meet those needs so that there are staff to do the work, that will be a huge challenge. And so I know you get sick of hearing me reporting about how difficult it is in this environment, in this space, but it will continue to be a challenge, so. Anyone else? If not, we're on to miscellaneous. Anyone have miscellaneous? I know. Just toying with the guy. Commissioner Antor?
We love each other, I tell you. The invocation this morning, I loved it. You know, I'm trying to think of Jesus Christ sitting down with his disciples and saying, you know what, we're going to start this project, we got to make sure we have funding for it, otherwise, we got to tap the brakes. That's basically what I got of that. So it's good to know, 2,000 years ago, our Lord and Savior wasn't into deficit spending. GVSU came up in discussion, just wanted to remind people that, yes, we do fund. GVSU is one of our fifteen state colleges. They just got a huge increase this year. I think we're up to about 1.4 billion dollars that we spend currently with higher education funding, so there is some money going out, a lot of money.
Just to clarify, you mean the state funds? Yeah.
Yes, state funding. And the fact that our logo was on the information that GVSU was putting out, that implies that we are donating, whether it's in-kind donation, it's still, I don't think it's appropriate at all. They don't need our money. They're flush with cash, as all our state colleges are, absolutely flush. University of Michigan has 17 billion dollars in their endowment fund, and, which is almost three times as much as the state of Michigan has in their general fund. So I think we got to be really cognizant about those types of issues with our health department. We got to keep them off those pages, or else there's going to be some consequences for that, I believe, so, thank you.
We usually don't exchange back and forth, there'd be just a point of clarification, that was just called to our attention. We're not even sure how that logo got there or why, but we are, we are exploring that.
Understood. I appreciate you acted on it. Thank you.
Let's see. Somebody over here had miscellaneous. Commissioner Diaz?
Couple of quick points. I would just like to state for the record that I am a, I very much appreciate the fact that Michiganders are able to participate and direct democracy. The people of Michigan spoke last year when it comes to reproductive health, reproductive health rights, and I'm very thankful that we were able to get that point across and succeed in that. Secondly, I would like to express public support for our health department. I'm a big advocate of health in any way possible, and I, for one, am going to be doing all I can to support our health department in any way that they need. And finally, to draw things a little bit closer to home here, in my district, I would very much like to invite you all to the Four Star Theater on Saturday. I will be there and spending as much time as I can there. I was not a Commissioner last year, so I was not, again, part of that ARPA process. I have a meeting with State Representative John Fitzgerald next week, Thursday, in which I will be asking him to try and get state funding, not only for the Four Star Theater... I will be asking him to try and get state funding, not only for the Forestar Theater, but also for the diatribe. And moving forward, I am hopeful, you know, as somebody who was born and raised in Kent County and grew up in the district that I represent, I am hopeful that, moving forward, we can do all we can to encourage and help economic development in the area. These neighborhoods have been left behind for a long time, and I would welcome your support, whether it's here at our level, at the county level, the city level, the state level, the federal level, to do all we can to support these communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Pontstein, I think, was next.
Thank you, Chair Steck. So I got the list of, several of you are going to be going to the NACO Legislative Conference coming up in a few days. For the people that'd be the first time attending to that, there's an orientation up front, you'll learn about what NACO does and what services it provides to our state and to our local county, and the resources that are available to you as county Commissioners. Just want to point out a couple things, the first couple days of it, a lot of the standing committees will meet. If you've got a topic that you're interested in, to sit on one of those is just a good time to listen, they bring in speakers from across the country on policy issues that are important to counties across the nation. If you're really interested in ever wanting to serve on a standing committee, those appointments are made through the Michigan Association of Counties, so anyone in our state that wants to have a seat at any of those, I think there's seven standing committees that get appointed through us, and it's just a matter of putting your name through. So I just hope you get a chance to look and listen to the things that are going on there. I sat on three of them. The one that I'm going to plug is the Arts and Cultural Commission, it's a lively meeting, I think it's on Sunday morning. So if you get a chance, you'll see me, I'm one of the vice chairs of that committee, as well as the vice chair of the Public Land Steering Committee, and that seems to be an odd one for Michigan, but just to put it in focus, Michigan is the second-largest payment-in-lie-of-tax state east of the Mississippi. So I always try to remind all my cowboy friends that sit on that committee that there are other counties that get payments besides the western states. And then to drive home the fact that when MAC goes to the events and work with NACO, we act in a bipartisan way, and we do everything we can to reach out to all of our representatives and senators. If you want to meet any of your representatives, there could be office hours that have already been set up through MAC, you can contact the staff or talk to them when you get there. There is one that's always set in stone, Senator Stabenow and Senator Peters always agree to meet with us. It's normally in the agricultural committee room, both of them come at the same time to field questions from us and, you know, to give us an update of what's going on. So I strongly encourage you to attend that if you can. They are asking this year of RSVP, you can do that through MAC, and I'm assuming for some reason that nothing to do with security. And I know that on Tuesday, they've added a special event that normally triggers that there's someone higher up in the administration that'll probably be coming in. So if you got a chance to hang around Tuesday, I strongly encourage it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wooden?
Thank you, Chair. I would like to echo Commissioner Diaz's comments and express my gratitude to our Health Department for providing STI testing in the past and providing the vouchers to GVSU. And the reason is this, our Health Department's responsibility is to help prevent communicable diseases, and that includes sexually transmitted infections. When you're in public health, I feel your, your job is to reduce harm, not necessarily to editorialize on the way things are being promoted. And if there is a conversation about sex, and you have means to help prevent the transmission of sexually, of sexual-based diseases, I would hope that our Health Department would provide that assistance to ensure public, greater public health. And I would also express frankly, even if the method in which some of these are being talked about wouldn't necessarily make a great evening activity for me, I would, I express my gratitude to GVSU for providing a, a setting that is comfortable for students who may not have had other means to learn about sex and healthy sexual activity in their homes or in their high schools. And the fact of the matter is, humor can be helpful when talking about sex, because I'm a 31-year-old man with a kid, married, and I feel uncomfortable talking about sex this morning.
Well, you're doing a lot of it.
I know. But I'm doing it because I think it is important to remember that statistics time and again have shown that abstinence-only or the absence of sex ed versus those who have had comprehensive sex ed that talk about the importance of delay and how contraceptions can be used are just as likely to have sex before marriage, and one is much more likely to prevent the transmission of STIs in unplanned pregnancy. And given the fact that we have people who have not had that education, who may be needing that education, that we have a healthy environment for people to experience that, I am very, very thankful that our Health Department has continued to not editorialize, but to provide access to the resources they have in a way to prevent communicable diseases. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sparks?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to say congratulations to us again to celebrate Black History Month. It's always really exciting to share your roots with other people. Black history is everyone's history. So I'd like to quote Dr. Martin Luther King, he's one of my favorite people in the world, I wish I had met him. He says, "I look forward to the day when people will not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character." It takes seven to 11 seconds to judge someone when you first meet them. And many times, you know, we judge based on our biases. So I'd like to thank us as a body for celebrating Black History Month. Thank you for all the people who do speak up for people who are African-Americans, that makes us, you know, appreciate you even more as allies, because sometimes we just don't want to be the angry black woman in the room, you know? So we just thank you for speaking out for us. The city of Kentwood is celebrating MLK Day with a walk, we're celebrating Black History Month. It's going to be a peace walk with New Hope Baptist Church and the African-American Museum, yes, there is one downtown, African-American Museum, that is going to be on the 25th at 11:00 a.m. by Woodland Mall, for anyone who is interested. Come, we lock arms together, all races, all creed, all nationalities, and we celebrate people. So definitely would like to have you there. I'm excited for the new members that are going to NACO. I am part of the membership committee, so we have a breakfast on Saturday where we welcome all of the new Commissioners who haven't been to NACO before, so you'll see me there with my smile on, and I'm just going to be so excited to share you guys, and I'm so proud of all of you, so I'm going to be able to share you with all of NACO. I'm also part of the Healthy Resilient Counties and the Community Economic Workforce and Development Steering Committee, so we will be busy there at NACO, making sure that we bring the information back to our counties. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Boujack?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to comment on the Grand Valley State University Sex Education Week that was brought to our attention. And I'd like to go on record that I'm opposed to the use of the Kent County Health Department logo as a sponsor of this event, and I applaud your efforts yesterday to reach out to Grand Valley State University. Since such time, those logos have been removed. And you indicated that you were going to have some kind of investigation to find out exactly how those logos were being used and promoted in, in their campaign. And I'd like to hear a report back to the full Board as to how that happened and what we can do to prevent those kinds of improper uses of the county logo with events that are not sponsored by the Kent County Health Department. Thank you.
Yeah, I think our commitment was to get the facts, we'll find out the facts and get back to folks, so. Yes, Commissioner Oliver Green?
Thank you, Chair. I just would like to encourage all of us to participate in upcoming sessions hosted by the Black Voices at the River. It, even though it says Black Voices at the River, it is important for us to participate and hear what constituents are saying, what they would like, how to be involved. And so Commissioner Baker and I, I'm glad we were there, along with county staff and city staff, and it is well worth your time, so I'm encouraging you to participate. Also, yesterday, I had the opportunity of meeting with Mr. Christopher Becker, our prosecuting attorney, and he said he has reached out to several of the new Commissioners who have not responded. It, it was a good meeting, so I'm also voicing, if you make time and you're scheduled to meet with Mr. Baker, I think you will like the tour as well as this conversation. We are, of course, in our household, go blue, he's go green, I know there are some of you that don't like that, but again, I'm just expressing, if you have the time, meet with him, it's well, it's well worth it. Thank you.
Thank you for underscoring what we really mean by bipartisan. Okay, anyone else? Yes, Mr. Coleman?
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to follow up with Minority Vice Chair Wooden's comments and suggest that if there are students that have made it to become students at Grand Valley State University that are not educated about sex, I'm happy to help educate them.
Yikes. Who wants to go after that? I don't see anyone. Oh, shoot, I have to, thanks a lot, Commissioner. So a couple of things. One, just an update, Commissioner Hildenbrand, Green, McLeod, and Wooden and I met for the Standing Rules Meeting this week. We will be following up in another week, I think, or approximately another week, two weeks. Continue our deliberation about the restructuring of the, of the Board and the standing committees, a number of you were also attending that as well, so appreciate that. Just so you know, that conversation is going on, if you do have an interest in participating or sending us your thoughts about that, do so, reminding that we have to have our report back to this Board by the first meeting in April, so this work will happen between now and mid-part of March. Second thing is, I have established a Bonding Review Advisory Committee with a statement of purpose, and I've asked Commissioners Coleman and Green and Baker to serve on that going forward and to take a look at this question of what would be an appropriate review structure on bonding requests, and to come back with its recommendations by May 8. So thank you to you folks willing to serve on that committee and, and help us with that. So with that, Commissioner Burrell, you have something.
Yes, thank you, Chair Steck. I move to adjourn, subject to the call of the Chair, to Thursday, February 23, 2023, at 8:30 a.m. for an official meeting.
All the support and favors, say yes.
Yes.
We are adjourned.